If you'd like to join us, dear heavenly and precious Father, we thank you for the opportunity to join here together today. God, I just pray that we are able to do the right thing for the most people of this county in all decisions we make and leave a good lasting impact on this county to keep moving forward. In your holy and precious name, we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We'll call this meeting of the Nicholas County Commission on February 3 of the year 2022 order. One of you all would like to get started there?
Okay. Upon review of the commission meetings minutes for January 20, 2021, I have motion to approve those.
Yeah, the motion's on the floor. It's ready discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against, the motion does carry.
Upon review of the estate and fiduciary matters as presented by the Nicholas County clerk, we move to approve accordingly unless otherwise noted.
Okay, the motion's on the floor. It's ready discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against, the motion does carry.
Upon review of the exoneration as presented by the Nicholas County assessor, move to approve accordingly.
Motion's on the floor. It's ready discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against, the motion does carry.
Upon review of the invoices as submitted by various departmental heads, the commission will take the appropriate action as deemed necessary.
Okay, that motion's on the floor. It's ready discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against, the motion does carry.
Upon submission of budget revisions received from the elected officials and department heads, commission will take the appropriate action as deemed necessary.
Okay, the motion's on the floor. It's ready discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against, the motion does carry. We do have on the Nicholas County Farmland Protection Program Board, Mr. Kim Stowers with a four-year term. Correction to extend term to office to June 30 of 2021. So you just need to, we appoint him or just correct that?
It just needs to be a correction.
Okay.
We had an expired veterinary that should've said June.
Okay, so we just need to change it for the record. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion's on the floor. It's ready discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against, the motion does carry. Nicholas County Historic Landmark Commission, we have Mr. Wayne Acord with a term expiring February 22, 2021. If you all have someone who would like to reappoint him?
I'll make the motion just to reappoint Wayne.
Okay, motion's on the floor to reappoint Mr. Wayne Acord. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against, the motion does carry. For the Historical Society and Genealogical Society representative, Mr. Thomas King with a term of office expiring February 22 of the year 2021. Do you all have anyone else or would you like to reappoint Mr. King?
I'll make a motion we reappoint.
Okay, the motion's on the floor to reappoint Mr. Thomas King. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against, the motion does carry. And we're gonna get right into it if it's okay with you. Yeah. What's that? Yeah, Clint, you're still on, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have with us Ms. Marcy Vaughn, the CEO of Seneca Health Services concerning mental hygiene, so.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Thanks for giving me a few minutes of your time.
Absolutely.
I wanted to take the opportunity to discuss the mental hygiene process and do a little bit of education about what it is, what it entails, and Seneca's role. The mental hygiene process, a lot of folks feel like Seneca is the driver in this process and in fact, we really are just a facilitator. It is a process that's run through your county circuit clerk and any individual that believes that a person who is in Nicholas County that is a danger to themself or others can file an application. In an effort to ensure that folks aren't accessing this system unless there's an absolute need, Seneca does help people fill out the application. But anyone can insist, even if we feel that maybe they don't meet the standards or there's a better treatment alternative for them, our staff actually facilitate this application. It is then filed in this court or if it's after hours with the magistrate or the appointed mental hygiene commissioner. So I've attached a copy of the application that actually gets completed by any person who wants a person examined. And upon receiving that application, your county magistrate or mental hygiene commissioner reviews it, makes a determination as to whether or not there's enough evidence to bring this person in under the custody of the county sheriff for an evaluation. It is at this time that an order is issued. And if you notice, immediately after the application, I've attached just a copy of the order that gets issued that directs the county sheriff to take this individual into custody and bring them before the mental health center to arrange or provide an evaluation. This is a service that we are mandated by West Virginia code to provide. And it involves the evaluation taking place by certain licensed professionals. So the code specifies that it needs to be a physician, a licensed psychologist, or it can be a physician assistant, a licensed independent clinical social worker, a licensed professional counselor, or a psychiatric nurse practitioner if they have submitted to the Nicholas County Circuit Court an application along with qualifications and been accepted as an expert. So the evaluation that takes place is essentially a court-ordered evaluation in which the expert is asked to answer three questions. The first is whether or not the individual is addicted to a substance or suffering from a mental illness. And if the answer to that is no, the process ends. If the answer to that is yes, the expert is asked to make a determination if there is a likelihood of harm to self or others. It doesn't have to be, and there's a lot of terms like imminent and those are legal terms. The expert is just asked, is it likely that this person is a danger to themself or others because of a mental health or substance use disorder? If the answer to that is yes, we're asked to make a recommendation about what's the appropriate level of care? Can they be treated on an outpatient basis? Do they need to go into a locked psychiatric facility? And that concludes the actual evaluation. There is a 10-page certificate of licensed examiner that is completed on everyone that is evaluated through this process. This form is set by the Supreme Court of West Virginia and serves as the document for provision of that service. So it's not a simple phone call. It is a face-to-face evaluation. We do use video telehealth as we have experts who live in other counties that perform this service. So I felt like it's important to understand that as we move into a letter. If the expert says yes, danger to self and others, yes, needs to be in a locked facility, it moves to an actual hearing. And at the hearing, the person being examined has an appointed attorney and your magistrate or commissioner will convene those proceedings at a time that occurs after the evaluation has taken place. So the letter received on January 21 from your attorney Clinton requested some clarification about items that are included on just a little check sheet that we send along with our statement. And I have provided for you, I de-identified just that initial sheet. And then the next page talks about what those different items on that sheet include. And it's simply out of our billing system, so you know, it has a client number that is a unique identifier for the individual. It has the name of the person, the person who performed the service, and then some internal codes that just designate what service was provided. So I won't take your time to go over those, but essentially, the 6050 and 6051 are numeric indicators for us on mental hygiene certification. One is for regular office hours and one is for after-hours. And that is for Seneca's ease because it designates whether or not it happened outside of our normal business. It helps us to track that. All of the folks who have performed these service for Nicholas County meet the qualifications set by the state. So they're licensed psychologists. We have a licensed independent clinical social worker who has submitted and been approved by the Nicholas County Circuit Court to perform these evaluations. And all of them have had the actual certificate completed on them. So I hope that that helps with regard to understanding what this evaluation is. It's not a simple process. It is one that is taken very seriously in that person's civil liberties can be removed if they are forcibly entered into a locked psychiatric unit. Additional information was requested with regard to the start and stop time and that has been provided for you all in a manner that removes the client names. I do have a list that I can submit that has the individual's names if that is necessary for payment. I have with me the forms that have been submitted previously for payment that include individual billing sheets on each and every evaluation. So any questions regarding what the nature of the service is that you are being requested to pay for? I also attached, I believe you have a copy of a letter that was sent because there was a question previously in October of 19. That includes the code section that talks about the involuntary commitment process and the county commission's payment for those evaluations.
Do you have any questions? My only question, what's that? Oh, yes, Mary, absolutely.
Yes. My name is Mary. And the bills when they come from the circuit court that they've been signed off on and they come to us to pay. When I first started doing this, we were getting more information than what we're getting now. And you're using a UB form. They're not familiar with this code, the CPT codes. We didn't used to get this.
Commissioner Cole, would you add first to the conversation?
She was at, okay, yeah.
Just come closer to the.
Okay. Okay. Back in 2019, we received like, we would get like 20 cases that would come down from the circuit court. It would have their name, it would have different information on it plus the authorization from the circuit court to pay it. And then we started getting what is called a UB with CPT codes on it that mean nothing to our commissioners. So actually, we were considering this lack of information.
You received that information from the circuit court?
No, I received, these are billing forms.
Right, those from us.
Yes.
But you typically receive it from the circuit court?
Well, only because you forwarded it to them, they authorized the pay. You know, they say, they certify it. And then it comes down to us. But at some point, you started using UB forms with CPT codes on it that don't mean anything to us.
Everything that is included in this packet is on file with the circuit court. I offered to your attorney to explain how it works in another of the counties that we are in partnership with. And we submit our bills to the circuit court. And the circuit court does exactly what you are saying. They review and say, yes, we have a certificate on this individual for this date. And they present the bill to the county commission. And it works very well. You know, the county commission doesn't have that responsibility of verifying. But everything that we have submitted is on file here in your circuit court. I don't know why they stopped providing those additional details. The, I'm sure it was probably maybe a copy of the actual certificate that they were submitting to you for payment?
The circuit clerk expressed to me back in 2019 that they were not getting what they used to get either. So.
They have everything. This is, these are not Seneca documents. This service is performed for the circuit court. So perhaps there needs to be a conversation with the circuit court and I'm happy to facilitate that conversation. But you know, they own this product. They own this document because we perform it as an order of the magistrate or the mental hygiene commissioner. So anything that you should need to process the payment is here. If there's something that we can do to help them provide you with that information, you know, we'll be happy to do that.
When you were talking about the cost, I know you raised it from 300 to 400 in 2019 or 18. I have it back there in my folder. Is there ever a contractual or is that a solid point? I mean, is there something that can be worked out with the commission? Where, you know, because I know that other agencies do a contractual, I mean, other insurance companies, other agencies with you. Is that a set, is that a reason that this 400 period?
It is actually, we lose money on 400. You know, because our staff have to be available 24/7, we actually pay a retainer fee to these licensed professionals to be available to respond 24/7. So, and we're not talking about your average clinicians. We're talking about our high-licensed licensed psychologists, physician assistants, LSCSWs. These are our folks that are top clinicians that are responding at all hours of the night. So we actually pay $500 a week for them just to be on call. So if they don't have any hearings, that's $500 that's gone. And that's one of the reasons we share them among other counties because we have the same obligation in Greenbrier and Pocahontas. So you know, that person is on call for all of those places. Also, you're just being charged for the evaluation. This person also has to provide testimony. So we may do the hearing, we may do the evaluation at 12:00 midnight. And it could be an hour, hour and a half process. And then your magistrate or your commissioner sets the hearing for 10:00 a.m. the next day. And our expert is having to participate in that hearing through testimony. And we're not charging for that. The only time that we have ever charged for that was when a member of the respondent's legal team required the expert to appear in person. They would not accept testimony over the phone as permitted by the code. But that was a rare instance.
So a lot of these are phone conversations?
No, none of what you are being billed for is a phone conversation. It is an evaluation that is occurring with applicant, with the respondent. It's a review of medical records and it's a completion of a 10-page report. It is a very litigious service. This service causes us the most grief. It is high-risk for lawsuit. And it's very serious in that, as I mentioned before, you're taking away civil liberties for an individual that is taken into custody and can be forced into a treatment facility. So our professionals take that very seriously.
Okay, so what you're saying is that Greenbrier County is being charged the same amount that Nicholas County is being charged. How is that different than when they're, when the reporting center is involved and it's $250? I think that's about what they pay.
You are, and I believe that Joan McCutcheon explained that in her letter that was sent on June 2019.
It's probably in my folder back there.
Yeah, you're talking about two different services. Day Report has a contract with us that if a person is in jail, a person who is in jail is not eligible for Medicaid or any type of sliding fee scales. They are considered to be the responsibility of the jail. Day Report will sometimes ask us to perform a service so that we can give treatment recommendations and they use them with the court. So that's being performed by a bachelor's level staff that is doing just our standard social history, collecting all the information about symptom and behaviors. They are not one of our licensed professionals making a decision about somebody being confined against their will. Totally different service. And that's what the 220, that's the standard fee for that service by a bachelor's level position. Two different things.
Like a lawyer and a paralegal.
Yes, yes. And you know, this process, as I mentioned, I mean, it's the one that it does. It calls it, and I perform these. I'm a licensed psychologist, so I do perform these evaluations. And it's a difficult call. You know, we, it's life or death. You know, we have to weigh very carefully, is this person safe? Or do we have reason to believe that they need to be forced into a facility where they cannot leave? So that's the determining factor. And these are not individuals that have asked for these evaluations. They're court-ordered. You know, they are not there willingly. They are actually picked up by the county sheriff. They're brought in in handcuffs and they are asked to participate in these evaluations. And you know, it's a very volatile, can be a very volatile interaction, but.
I could see that.
So kind of walk me through it a little bit. So you get a phone call or 911 gets a phone call, somebody from somebody. And the deputies go and they remove the person, let's just say, from the house or wherever, or they've arrested them. They bring them into detention. And is that where they make the, they go to the magistrate? The magistrate has to say to call you, they have to fill out this form and call. Seneca, who initiates the phone call to bring mental health into the picture?
Well, usually, our call comes from the general public. So whether it be they have called here and said that they wanted to file a mental hygiene and the circuit court says you need to go to Seneca. Again, because we serve as a gatekeeper of sorts. We get lots and lots of calls from people who are concerned about their family that never actually reach this process. And we have staff at our Stevens Road office that will work with those people on, you know, asking the questions about are they willing to come in for treatment? And if they are, we say bring them on in and we get them into the office and they are enrolled in voluntary outpatient treatment. Sometimes our worker will say they do need to go somewhere. They need to be safe and the person is willing. So those staff make those referrals too. They might send them to the Pavilion or they could end up at Crosswinds, our detox unit. And then, so they're put into a voluntary inpatient setting. When the family has called and the person is absolutely not willing, they will not talk to anybody on the phone, they will not go to any doctor's appointments, that's when they're presented with the option of filling out this paper. And our staff will sit down with them. We cannot write it for them. You know, we cannot provide them with words. It is simply, you know, this is a form. We check to make sure that everything is filled out completely. We do say be sure to include anything that's happened in the last three days. But it has to be in their words because that person who files this is going to have to testify to that in the hearing. They actually have to present that under oath to the magistrate or the commissioner. So once the application is filled out and they've included why they think they're a family member or friend, it doesn't have to be a relative, it can be anyone, why they think they're mentally ill or addicted to substances, why they think they're a danger to self or others, that's when it goes before your county magistrate or your county mental hygiene commissioner. And they look it over and say, mm, you know, no, this is not a mental health issue. This is a domestic violence issue. And so they can dismiss it and it never goes any further. But if they say, eh, we might be having a mental health crisis here, then that's when they issue that pickup order. And the county sheriff then gets dispatched out. They set a hearing, an evaluation time and a hearing time. They'll go pick the person up. They are brought to the Seneca offices and we facilitate the evaluation from there. Now, as far as detaining in Nicholas County, hearings are not held after 10:00 p.m. because of a lack of attorneys to represent the respondent. So there are times when your county sheriff is, you know, they have this person in custody overnight.
And usually it's two deputies, it's usually not just one.
And that's not the case in all counties. Other counties do provide those forthwith. So you know, we come out and do the evaluation at 2:00 a.m. And the hearing is held immediately after we finish the evaluation. But here, there is a standard of there are not hearings after 10:00 p.m.
And where does your hearing take place? In the magistrate's office or in the Seneca office?
In, well, pre-COVID, they were held in the magistrate's office. Or, well, even when you had the full-time commissioner, they were held in the magistrate's office. Post-COVID, we do use Zoom, which is a video conferencing. It is HIPAA secure. It is accepted by all of the medical payers as an acceptable form of intervention. It has site and sound and it is on a private connection.
So, and then I guess it comes down to, does the patient or the person in their holding and you're doing the evaluation, there's a $400 fee. Are they responsible? I mean, do you try to build their insurance or Medicare or whoever? I mean, is it automatically fall back to the county? Or is there not some other steps that makes the responsibility of someone else? Like someone who filed the petition or something like that before it just is automatically, I check we got it right?
Yeah.
Commissioner, I can answer that question. The West Virginia State Code explicitly states that the county commission are responsible for.
If you look on the very last page, the number 10.
Now, what the code doesn't state is what the fee is or any information related to the configurance of the fee. And that's what I'm interested in. And that's why I sent the letter to this law on January 21, 2021. And those were the, that's why I made your request for this document. And I think, you know, the commission as a customer of Seneca has the right to be able to split the payment for. Furthermore, the order that Nicholas County Circuit Court issued approving their $400 payment. It doesn't say anything that somehow would restrict or otherwise prohibit the county commission from, you know, asking for the documents and receiving the documents that I requested in that letter. But the code explicitly states that the county commission bears the cost of that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a contract with Greenbrier or Pocahontas counties on the $400?
No, there's no contract. You know, we are one of 13 comprehensive behavioral health centers across the state. I will tell you, there are some counties that pay some of the retainer fees that they pay part of the on-call cost that is being paid to the. they, they pay part of the on-call cost that is being paid to the professionals. We, we do not have you all to do that. You know, we, we view it as, we kind of have a, a, with our licensed contractors, the way we do it, if they only perform one evaluation during the week, they don't get any additional dollars for that, they just get the $500 retainer fee. So if we bill you for the $400, there's, there's $100 there that is, is above the, the cost. You know, if, if they perform more than one, then we're paying them additionally for each of those, because it is, as I mentioned, a very high-risk service that they're providing, and it's provided at all hours of the night. You know, your, your sleep is interrupted, and so our on-call fee is for availability. And there are weeks that we pay for that availability that we never have a hearing. And so there's no charge to, to you all or to, to Greenbrier or Pocahontas Counties. When you consider the, the level of professional that you have making these decisions, a physician, a licensed psychologist, these are independently licensed professionals who are making a very high-risk determination, $400 is pretty reasonable, especially considering that they, after that, provide testimony in the proceedings.
Yeah, I'm looking at this warning thing in the box there with all those things that can be permanent against that person. Okay, there's, there's a lot of stuff there.
They lose their right to bear firearms. They could not possess a firearm.
Uh-huh, and I, I can see where it could be litigious. Okay. Yeah, that, as, as a practitioner, will raise your rates, I can tell you that. Okay, your insurance rates will go up. And, of course, they continue to go up anyway. I've been a practitioner for 40 years, and what was, used to be almost nothing is now thousands of dollars per year.
And, and it, it is a decision, as I said, it's, it's life or death. You make the wrong call and somebody is, you know, not certified and they're released and something does happen to them. I mean, that's, it's a huge responsibility that these individuals are taking, and they, all of them, take the evaluation process very seriously.
And does your, and I guess I'm, your process, it evaluates whether this is criminal behavior or mental health behavior? Is, is that kind of what, and, and that determines which way the magistrate or the circuit clerk is going to go with, with what they do? Is that...
The evaluation only answers those three questions. Are they mentally ill or addicted to substances? Are they likely to cause harm to themselves or others as a result of that mental illness or addiction? And then the last one is, what's the, what's the best place for them to be treated? The, the respondent's attorney many times will, will present evidence as to whether it's legal or mental health. So it's not uncommon for the magistrate or the, the mental hygiene commissioner to be making a determination that maybe this is more a legal issue, and they may direct the applicant to file criminal charges, but that's not a determination that's made by the evaluator. The evaluator is strictly looking at, "Do I have somebody before me that has a mental health or substance use disorder?" And if the answer is yes, then they, they proceed to the likelihood to harm, to self or others. We will be happy to submit whatever it is that is, is needed for payment, you know, the, we can submit the actual certificate. I mean, I, I don't know, you know, that, that puts a lot of this information in you all's hands when it is here in this building at the circuit clerk and, or circuit court. You know, that's, in other counties, we submit the invoice to the, the circuit court, they verify that we did in fact perform that service, and they submit the payment to the county commission.
Well, I think what we can do is we can, we can get with the circuit clerk and find out what's here, and if not, we'll just come back to you and ask for more information. That'd be the easiest thing to do.
Yep, we, we don't maintain, we do keep copies of these, just because our provider did this, but the original is filed here in the, the court, because it is a circuit court document, as you can see from the, the actual paper form. I, I will, if, if you have no more questions about the mental hygiene process, I will mention, I did put in your packet a copy of a lead brochure. Seneca does have a grant, it's called Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion. We just recently got some numbers from the West Virginia State Police about the number of drug-related arrests in Nicholas County. And this is a program that officers can actually refer individuals who have small crimes, like maybe they've stolen, maybe they shoplift, and it's because of a substance use disorder, they can actually be given the option of entering into treatment rather than, than having that charge and going to jail. And we have a specialized case manager that tracks them and makes sure that they complete all the necessary requirements. Some counties have found that it's saving them money on their jail bill, because the individuals are not sitting in the, the regional jail, they're actually engaged in treatment. So if you have questions about that, there's some contact information on the back for Angie Hypes, and Kami Griffin is actually the lead coordinator for Nicholas County.
Thank you. Well, yeah, very good, we appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for having me. I did include my business card on the inside of your folder. If you ever have any questions, let me know, and we will be happy to work with, with you all in the circuit court on making sure you have all the information you need.
That's appreciated.
Clint, do you have anything?
Yes, um, there, there's an issue, which are very getting documents from the circuit clerk, there's an issue, but, but I could certainly explain that to the commission later. And, and I think, I think all commissioners remember that I served as mental hygiene commissioner in Nicholas County for over a year, a couple of years ago, and handled dozens and dozens of cases. Those are, those is not, is me. What I would recommend as counsel to the commission is that the council, the, the commission take no action. I would ask that the documents, all the documents that Ms. Vaughn brought with her be, be delivered up to me so I can compare them to what I requested in my letter dated January 21, 2021, and see what's there and what's not there. And of course, the issue is, in, in that letter, what I requested, I mean, we're not looking for the personal information about the people that are, are subject to petition. And the letter is very specific and spaced, so what we're looking for are the details and, and how the invoices are, are generated and what, you know, how do they, how do they come what they offer? So if the commission would, if the administrative staff would send those up to me, then I will just quickly review what was saying and compare whether my letter, if something's not there, I'll send another letter to Miss Vaughn and ask for that information.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Then we'll go back to the grants. Okay. Then that way you all don't have to sit through any more escapades, but we'll get live, or we are live. Thank you, Jeremy. Clint's still live over here. Clint, are you still on?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, now we're here with special guests, Mr. Dave Perry and Mr. Tom Siner, with a proposal concerning local radio and television access to the Lone Tree Tower that is in our E-911 system. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Atkins and Mr. Chapman, thank you for this. And I apologize, I know you all, with board of visualization and budget, you're very busy, so I'll try to be very brief, at the same time supplying you the information you're interested in. Back, probably about nine months ago, we started some preliminary discussions with folks out in the community here, businessmen, the mayor and so forth, about moving into the area with, with 107.7. As part of that, it would involve placing a translator and transmitter on one of the towers here. Our engineers indicated that probably the best tower would be the 911 center. So that caused us then to start talking with your 911 director, who at that time appeared to be in agreement, supportive, and understood the value of this additional offering to the citizens of Nicholas County. However, we ran into an issue that the tower was owned, I think, by Bill Bright, and Bill Bright had leased it to, or give it, or to the county commission. Then at that point, I contacted Mr. Bright, who had no problem with it, and he referred me to Brian Johnson, which I kind of think he's his manager right now, so to speak. And Brian said, "They had no problem with it, if, if you all agreed to allow it to happen." So, kind of to give you an idea, on the tower, as I said, there would be a translator, there would be a transmitter in your building, we'd go up 100 feet, the service area would be Sommersville and, and, uh, Craigsville initially. There would, the, the service that would provide the county commission and the citizens of Nicholas County would be emergency broadcast services. If everything was down, then the 911 director would call Tom, and we would broadcast for you, and that's been used during Duratio and Fayette County. That was the only communication that people had, and they allowed them to direct ambulances and direct police and so forth to homes and residents. The other service would be public service announcements. All of this would be available to county commission. Public service announcements about promotions, such as health promotions, fairs, festivals, any activity to be in the county, all of this would be available to the county commission and organizations to that. Of course, it, it involves a contract, and we have contracts presently with Raleigh County on their 911 center, Greenbrier County, Fayette County, and we're talking today down at the emergency preparedness center in Charleston, because we're getting ready to, this is offer, we're getting ready to move into the Charleston areas as well. And of course, it appears the state's going to let us on their tower down there to transmit. He used to be in Fayette County with our director. So it would involve a contract, and we have here today a sample contract from Raleigh County. As part of that extension, we would offer to you guys $125 a month as a goodwill gesture to say, "We're going to stay there and at the same time be of some economic, small economic value towards your $400 for the county commission." So we would hope, whether permitting, to be on, to come online within the next two weeks, a maximum of two weeks, which requires hiring a certified climber to climb the tower, to put the equipment on there and so forth, and maintain it and keep it up. So, gentlemen, that's the philosophical part of it, but if you have any technical questions, Mr. Siner can answer those. If there's anything I haven't answered, please, please do so right now.
The questions I have, again, I ask this for the public.
Certainly.
Would you remind, saying what all that you'll, you'll be giving the public, what all will be out there again?
Through the county, obviously, going to be broadcast, ballgames and so forth in the, in the interest of public.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to get you to go and say.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Parade, ballgame.
Parades, ballgames, so forth.
That wasn't said to start with.
Right, no, I didn't. I was, I was identifying the benefits to the county commission.
Okay, but I'm asking for the public, so they'll know, okay?
Certainly, certainly, and I respect that. But it would be parades, it would be ballgames, it would be anything of interest to the community, such as socials, such as fairs, festivals, so forth. And you have a lot of activities over here in your armory building as well.
Right. If I may, what, what we do on the radio station is a classic live format, the frequency is 107.7 FM. It boosts our main channel and gives us what's called a grade A signal here in, in Nicholas County. But what we focus on at the radio station is, you know, we do, we do a morning program live, and we do an afternoon program live, and we have guests there. Like, for example, if there are things going on in the community, that you all are more than welcome to come to the studio, and we do the program talking about what's important, what's going on here in, in Nicholas County. When he talks about public service announcements, those are like commercials that we can run on the radio station. Now, it'll run in the other areas, you know, in Greenbrier County, in Raleigh County, so on and so forth, which is what, and that's a good thing, you know, to get people's attention. But anything you guys can think of to promote the county, we welcome, and the FCC does too, it's called issues programming, to go and sit with us, we play music in between to keep the audience and talk about what's going on in the community, from the potato festival to whatever is on your mind. PSAs are things that you guys would want out there, whatever the topic may be, and then we broadcast it. Now, Dave mentioned emergency issues, if something happens, there was a fire in Greenbrier County, the Greenbrier County 911 center picked up the phone, we immediately put it on the air. You have a, a source of, of communication, everybody, if you wanted to use that, just by using your telephone, and we can immediately, within a five-minute period, or even quicker, put that on the air, give a message out to the people. So the, the unit itself isn't a big transmitter, it's a very, it sits in a rack, it's about the size of a stereo, you know, it's only 250 watts, one antenna bay, which weighs about three pounds, and that's pretty much it. We pick it up off the internet, it'll retransmit what you're hearing when you're in Oak Hill, and what you're hearing in Beckley, what you're hearing in Lewisburg, the same thing will happen here. But use it as a tool, you know, to get information out, because you're not only transmitting here, but you're transmitting in, in a vast area.
In the serial county here.
At any time, and we welcome this.
Which would also promote Nicholas County to other areas, which then indirectly or directly could affect revenue and businesses.
And you previously, previously spoke with our director, and there's Brune Tower and everything like that.
Yes.
Yes.
We met with him probably over a three-month period, at least three times. And he was very agreeable, and he was very agreeable, and supporting, he was even more agreeable than we thought, the 125. But as I said, the issue that came up then was the ownership or who would allow it and prevent it and so forth, that's when Bill Bright and Brian Johnson got involved.
Yeah, and the antenna only goes, it's 100 feet off the ground, that's all it needs. I mean, it, right up on the hill cover the area that we're, we're looking at. The process takes about a day, we have a certified insured climber, matter of fact, I believe he does work on your tower now that would actually hang the antenna, and the process takes about a day to put together. But use this as a tool, like they're using, promotion, PSAs, come on the air. You know, Dave can tell you about the afternoon program, we always have people in the community from Dr. Paul Connelly here, who lives in Sommersville, does a program called Doc Talk, we also have a television channel. But he goes on the radio, we talk about the importance of COVID-19 and, you know, being safe and so on and so forth, and he does that about every three or four days. And that's been really important to the community to, to hear from him. Well, our signal's not that strong coming in here. This will help us, and there are a lot of folks, I believe Dr. Paul Connelly came from this area, and I know he lives here, well, this information also, you know, with some of the folks and some of the folks in the hospital, and, you know, it would be good for the people here to talk about, you know, safety, because that's mostly what he talks about. But we have many different topics, you know, Dave, and we have the state school board president, and we talk about things with the community, we, we also...
Your local school board.
Yeah. So, so things that you might have in mind, we welcome it on a daily basis to that radio station. And if there ever is, God forbid, an emergency, you have a direct line to that transmitter and, and to the airwaves.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
We just need to talk to Sean.
Well, that's what you recommended, table for the next meeting, because, you know, review your contract if you can leave that there.
I'll go and talk to this. Like I said, it's not blank, this is sample Raleigh County.
Yes, okay. And, you know, I mean, like you've mentioned, Director Wolford, and also, we'd probably just have to get written approval from Bill Bright, just for our own records.
Will you, you don't have any kind of contract with Brown or anything yet?
No, no, not at all.
Maybe he's already verbally agreed.
Yes, yes.
And it's for interference, as you see, we've been on these towers for a few years now, and, and we have a good relationship with everybody, so...
Would you want me to secure that letter from Bill Bright and Brian? Are you all with me?
Sure. Let's talk to Sean.
Well, yeah, let's talk to Sean, but I'll get back with you.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Good, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all be careful.
Your next meeting is when?
February 17th.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll talk in between, okay?
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Guys, have a good day.
Go ahead and take a break. Okay, we have now, here at my request, you know, seeking an individual to work grants, and they, they put out different options we could consider. Basically, a lot of these Department of Justice grants that we're going after, the sheriffs are going after, and also just, you know, the cares and everything else has shown us that the federal system... us that the federal system on grants is just getting harder. I know that the chief deputy expressed multiple concerns to me, and presumably you all as well, and also Patty here in the office. I've actually been involved in a couple of grants in the systems, and it truly is something. So I just kind of wanted to bring this to the table. I know, I mean, as Commissioner Atkins mentioned a second ago, I mean, I won't take your time here, but, you know, done right, a person in this position can pay for himself. I mean, I'll let you expand on that, but I mean, I think you're absolutely, absolutely right.
Well, it gives us an opportunity to look and see what is available, and an opportunity to gain those for the county, which is what we're looking at, okay? And it takes someone that, you know, has some experience in this type of thing to be able to, to basically walk through the steps that it is required to be competitive in those. And certainly, if you never put your name out there, you're never going to get anything, okay? And we've seen some of the stuff that the sheriff's done, just like with security and some things like that, and I think there's a possibility there's other things out there that are available that we could get that would help our county. And, you know, I would recommend that we advertise the position and see what response we get.
Okay.
And then go from there.
Legal counsel, you're still on the phone, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Is that something you could help us craft up, that position?
Like a, like a pristine first position?
Well, and the position itself, we don't, we've never had a grant, right?
With top description and whatnot?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. I agree with that. Maybe get that in order and all three of us approve it, and then advertise.
Yeah.
We actually talked to Clint about it, didn't we?
Would the commission be inclined to, to take no action today on this agenda item, and then I could present, like, give me some time to present, you know, what I could draft up between this meeting and the next meeting?
That's great.
That's fine with me.
That's fine.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes, very good.
That's best, that's best.
Okay, yep.
Okay, yeah, now, thank you, Clint, for that.
Of course.
We'll circle back on that, so that'll need to be on next, getting to agenda, please. And then also, at my request here, the next thing we have is a resolution of support of the Somersville Area Airport and Nicholas County Airport Authority concerning proposed Army Corps master plan, which for those who do not, do not know, essentially, the Army Corps of Engineers do not feel that the Nicholas County Airport is a vital part of their general plan going forward. They want to focus more on, you know, the environmental issues of the lake as well as tourism. However, you know, we've gave up railroads, we've gave up sawmills, like we were starting to get some back. We give, we give, we give, and I don't think it's right for this county to lose a three-and-a-half million dollar asset just because a group of federal employees have an opinion.
I would like to add to this, that what they're proposing to do is, it's a twenty-year plan, and right now, we're on nineteen years and something. Well, the FAA gives us, can give us the money, but we have to have a twenty-year lease on for them to give us that money. So they're in essence knocking us out of millions of dollars that could be coming into the area, okay? And certainly, it's one of the things that we don't want to lose, okay, down the road. There's been a very energetic group of guys that are on this building authority, are on this airport authority with me in the last year, and we've made a lot of progress. There are, we'll have a new eight-bay hangar there sometime this year, with individual hangars for each of the, for planes, and we'll have a couple of bays that will be for whatever else we would want it to use for, okay?
Well, and that being said, this board went after and got a one million dollar hangar for $10,000. So it's not like we're blowing money, it's not like we're not advocating our resources properly, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I mean, that in itself goes to show you are a dynamic group.
Yeah. And this hangar's coming up from Yager Airport that was put up about four years ago, four or five, and they're going a different direction than you to have their hangar removed. So anyway, it should be probably removed by the end of March.
Yeah.
And on its way here.
And that's to expand their Marshall Flight Program, Flight School.
Yeah.
Which also wants to use the Somersville Regional Airport, whatever the tree name is, for touch and go.
Yeah.
So that's adding to the aeronautics education in the state.
Really is, okay. I would make a motion that we support this resolution.
Okay. I asked, I need to read it in the record.
Okay.
If you don't know, I'll read it in the record real quick.
Yeah.
This is a resolution on behalf of the Nicholas County Commission, requesting United States Army Corps of Engineers to extend that certain lease between the United States Army Corps of Engineers and the County Commission of Nicholas County, West Virginia, on behalf of the Nicholas County Airport Authority, Nicholas County, West Virginia. Whereas, the core mission of the United States Army Corps of Engineers is designed to strengthen our nation's security by building and maintaining infrastructure, researching and developing technology, and promoting stability and improved quality of life. And whereas, West Virginia has recently made efforts to revitalize and develop new and existing tourism and commerce industries of the state, including educational, recreational, and economic, and military opportunities and development. And whereas, extending that certain lease between the United States Corps of Engineers and the Nicholas County Airport Authority, Nicholas County, West Virginia, will permit said Nicholas County Airport Authority to manage and maintain facilities located at the Somersville Airport, would facilitate the development of educational, recreational, economic, and military-related opportunities in West Virginia, including but not limited to tourism of Somersville Lake, newly found New River Gorge National Park and Preserve, and the surrounding area, development of new flight instruction programs, relocation of existing flight instruction programs, development and relocation of new or existing medical air transport companies, development of charter and air taxi services, sales, service, repair, and storage of aircraft, facilitation of activities related to the Summit Vetral Reserve National Scout Camp and Young Life Summer Program. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the County Commission of Nicholas County, West Virginia, on behalf of the Nicholas County Airport Authority, requests to the United States Army Corps of Engineers a lease extension between the United States Army Corps of Engineers and the County Commission of Nicholas County, West Virginia, on behalf of the Nicholas County Airport Authority, Nicholas County, West Virginia, for a period of ten years, and permit the said Nicholas County Airport Authority to develop, manage, and maintain facilities located at the Somersville Airport, situated in Somersville, Nicholas County, West Virginia, pursuant to the guidelines and directives of the Federal Aviation Authority, and to sustain funding of the said airport, and to continue the development of the Somersville Airport in support of the economic advancement and growth of West Virginia. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Nicholas County Commission of Nicholas County, West Virginia, is hereby directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the United States Army Corps of Engineers, adopted this third day of February 2021. So Commissioner Atkins has the motion on the floor to approve as read. Is there any further discussion to be had? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against, the motion does carry. And it would be my recommendation that a copy of this be forwarded to all congressional and higher state representatives.
Yeah.
And that's something we.
Yeah, I might add, you know, this ten goes on top of the, on top of the other.
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years, okay. Because we have to have a twenty-year thing to get the FAA, okay?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We'll go ahead and take another one. Okay, we're here now at a public comment period, and for the record, there's not been anyone signed up for a public comment. Is there any other, any other concerns that the commissioner would like to address at this time? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn this regularly scheduled meeting of the Nicholas County Commission on February third of the year 2021?
I'd like that motion.
Motion's on the floors, are in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, the motion does carry. We are adjourned. Thank you.